Okay, we're rolling.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs will present this case for the, for the board.
All right, Mr. Gibbs, let's hear what you have to say, please. Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is case one twenty twenty P U D. Applicant is Randall G. Merrill with McGill Smith Puntin Incorporated on behalf of Klaus Anderson LLC, who are the property owners of twelve forty and twelve forty six Nagel Road. That is zoned E retail business.
And, and Mr. Gibbs, I just need to jump in for a second with the disclosure. I do not have a conflict. But I know several of the applicant's presenters in, in the audience tonight. And also Mr. Reinhardt, who's a neighboring property owner, I know him as well. But, you know, we don't have any other relationships. So I just wanted to let you know, there's a few familiar faces out there.
Okay, we do need to swear in. I'm sorry, we forgot to do that too.
We need to swear in.
And, and we do need to swear in everybody who's going to be speaking tonight. So if you are going to be speaking, please raise your right hand. And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do. Okay, thank you. Please continue. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Yeah, go ahead and start over if you want.
I did it, B Z A, I was there a couple of weeks ago. So yes, the P U D request is on, on the slide. The applicant is requesting a plan unit development approval to develop the property with a impervious surface ratio of sixty four percent, where sixty percent is required per Article four point one C one C of the Anderson Township zoning resolution. So the applicant is proposing to split the property into two lots. The first lot would be phase one, scheduled to move forward first. And that is a ten thousand square foot medical office building. Phase two is for an eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy five square foot daycare with an outdoor playground. That would be following at a later date. The total proposed development again is sixty, sixty four percent impervious surface ratio. Therefore, that is where the requirement for a P U D comes into play. The zoning history, previously nineteen eighty two, five office buildings were constructed as well as a freestanding pole sign that is now located on Beechmont adjacent to the driveway accessing Anderson Pub and Grill and the retail center. From eighty nine to two thousand, several different approvals for phase changes have happened. This pole sign is not, no longer on the property. We'll get that to a little bit, but was used to advertise for the office buildings. Those five office buildings were demolished in twenty eighteen. And the property that we're discussing today were assigned new addresses within this last month. We'll get into some of the, the maps here. The property map, okay, just still shows the data showing those five office buildings that are no longer there. So you can see the property outlined in red. However, the current property is a vacant field. Beechmont runs to the south. Nagel runs to the west. Anderson Pub and Grill is to the southwest and acts, and is that corner lot on Beechmont and Nagel. The Anderson Retail Center is on the borders of southeast portion of the property. The Goddard School and the Cincinnati Financial are to the north. As you're looking at this aerial map, you can see that it is vacant land currently. The parking lot is filled. It is used by Subaru dealership for overflow parking. The next slide is the zoning map. It shows that this is currently zoned E. It matches much of what you see along Beechmont as that business retail zoning. As you go north on Nagel, you start to see more of a transition. So as you travel up, you see more of that office zoning and eventually gets into residential zoning and then lower density residential the further north you go. The development plan, so lot one is the parcel closest to Nagel Road. So on the left, lot two is for the daycare center. And you'll see that just to the east of lot one. The landscape plan is the next slide. Landscape plan was in compliance with Anderson Township zoning resolution. The photometric plan showing the lighting. We had a couple of issues with the cutoff restrictions along the north property line. Lighting levels exceeded point five feet candles. And that's what zoning requires there to be anything less than point five. Really hard to see on the screen, but if you have the larger properties, you can start to see on that northern property line where it exceeds point five. And then on the east property line, there are two points where it exceeds point seven five, which are required if it's a cutoff for any type of retail business. They did provide a medical office building rendering. And we did come to the conclusion that this does meet design guides for lot one. No renders for lot two have been submitted yet. The first photo here is behind Anderson Retail Center looking west. So where you see the blacktop change is the access, access way to Beechmont. Nagel Road is straightforward, fronting the, the residential buildings and the office buildings there. The next slide is behind Anderson Retail Center looking north at Cincinnati Financial and the Goddard School. We're still behind Anderson Retail looking east. This is looking at, on the site, looking southeast towards Anderson Retail Center. One thing to note on this photo that we can come back to is that the building for the Anderson Retail Center does sit on the, the border of this property. So currently, those staff do use that parking, which will, they will not be accessed to once this property is developed. But we'll, we'll get into that to, once we get into staff findings. So this is looking in southwest at the side of Anderson Pub and that access way to Beechmont again. Next photo, we're looking, we're on the west property line looking north up Nagel Road. On west property line, looking east back towards the retail center. We're looking south at, towards Beechmont. You see the tide cleaners on the right. And then this is the sign on Beechmont that was previously used to advertise for those five office buildings. So the staff findings, again, they're planning on separating this into two phases. Lot one, they've submitted the landscape plan, lighting plan, exterior renderings that they would like to get approved today. They would, are requesting that the zoning commission review the plans for phase two at a later date. So the zoning resolution, so they're not compliant with three articles. Article three point fourteen C two, which is the front yard setback. Due to the panhandle connection to Nagel Road and the adjacent parcel south separating the, the applicant's parcel from Beechmont, the front yard for lot two, the daycare center, begins at the west property line. Therefore, the proposal only meets a twenty one foot front yard setback where thirty is required per the zoning resolution. So you will see, we have included that into a variance later on. Also, the, the applicant must provide two bicycle parking spaces with locking accommodations. And then to resubmit lighting levels that do not exceed that point five on the northern property line, point seven five on the eastern property line. Sinage, the applicant is proposing one monument sign on Nagel Road. Staff is encouraging a similar design to surrounding monument signs, not exceeding ten foot in height. The applicant's sign, the one on Beechmont, was owned by Caboni Missionaries, who remain the owners of that Anderson Retail Shopping Center that the sign is on the property of. And that constructed freestanding sign advertised the previous office park. If you can go to the next slide, please. That freestanding sign is nonconforming by today's standards on these three articles. The next slide will give a better brief. So the Anderson Retail Center sign owned by Caboni Missionaries has two freestanding signs on the property with a hundred and fifty six foot street frontage where four hundred is required. The freestanding sign is also twenty nine foot in height and has two hundred and sixty four square foot of surface area, where fifteen in height and a hundred square foot of surface area are the maximums. So the Beechmont sign is not under consideration for the P U D request as is located on a separate parcel. But the staff is in the opinion that this is now off premise signage. We have looked at how this P U D applies to our Anderson plans. So that includes Anderson Trails, Beechmont Plan, Design Guidelines, and Anderson Plan. So first we'll, we found that as far as the Anderson Plan, that it was consistent with multiple portions of the comprehensive plan, including economic health, quality of life, land use development, and, uh, land use and development, both on initiatives and a mixture of residential neighborhoods, commercial centers. Anderson Trails Plan, the township is actively involved in the construction of sidewalks and other paths along the Beechmont corridor to help improve pedestrian safety. The staff noticed the existing sidewalk that's located on the frontage of Nagel Road. The proposal includes sidewalks surrounding both buildings. However, there are no connections made to that Nagel, that Nagel Road existing sidewalk. So we do, we would like to see some sort of connection made to, for it to apply to the Anderson Trails Plan. The design guidelines, it was, follow the elements of site planning, architecture, landscaping, lighting. Again, once you get down to the interconnection of the sidewalks proposed on the site, we would like to see that the two lots have some sort of sidewalk connection. Beechmont Plan, parking lot connections, street trees, landscaping, landscape between sidewalks, parking lots, where all, all match the Beechmont Plan. So overall, the staff recommends the approval of the P U D evaluation under Article four point one G. We do have the variance, if you can go forward. So the variance for a front yard setback of twenty two feet where thirty feet is required. The staff also recommends the approval. We do not find that it is substantial to the fact that the applicant is replacing an existing vacant field and parking lot and that the adjacent property that it is fronting is also owned by the same property owner. We did have three commissions on, on your packet. We do have two to include that I mentioned earlier. So one is freestanding side on Nagel Road should be limited to a monument style sign with a maximum of a max, maximum height of ten feet and a base consistent with proposed building materials. A shared parking agreement between lot and one and two or shall be submitted to the township staff recorded prior to final occupancy. A pedestrian plan shall be resubmitted identifying sidewalk connections internally into surrounding properties. The lighting plan resubmitted in compliance. And then the two bicycle parking spaces with locking and accommodations added to the site.
Okay, great job, Mr. Gibbs. Way to go.
Thank you.
Very thorough report and very helpful for me. So are there any questions for staff at this time? Mr. Durgis?
Yeah, I guess I was just curious if there had been any discussions or any traffic studies done on what this would do to the traffic on Nagel or any of the side streets?
I personally have not seen a traffic study.
So I don't think a formal traffic study has been done, although I know the applicants have been in communication with the county engineer's office regarding Nagel. Cause we did bring up the fact that there are two curb cuts on Nagel. The county engineer was not supportive of closing either one of those due to the cross access over to the shopping center and also the cross access up to Beech, Beechmont Avenue. So they are proposing to dedicate right of way, where that is not a requirement of a P U D, but they are proposing to dedicate right of way to allow for improvements in the future if needed, which the county would be responsible for. But they are proposing to dedicate the right of way, but keep the two access, two accesses. And I think, I'm sure the applicant will, can speak to that to more detail.
Okay, are there other questions for Mr. Gibbs or Mr. Grier? Ms. McBride?
Yeah, so a little bit aside from what we're looking at here, can we talk about that pylon sign on Beechmont?
I knew that would be a topic.
You knew I was gonna go there.
The Beechmont pylon sign.
Yeah, the Beechmont pylon, which I understand is not part of this, this request.
Mr. Gibbs says it was not, but please let us know.
No, this is a question just for staff. Totally suffered, okay guys? So it's a nonconforming sign. Don't we have any provision in our code that says if it is vacant?
So we do. And we notified the property owner when the office buildings were removed. And the applicant, or the property owner, representative of the property owner responded that the sign is still in use. Therefore, it is allowed to remain. If you look at that picture, they are advertising their retail center. So the township chose not to pursue that further. However, we wanted to make the applicant aware and be upfront with signage. Ever since the first time we met, we brought the sign up. Cause we wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page. So this sign, it says Anderson Retail, and it is on this property and technically is advertising the shopping center as Anderson Retail. But we feel that now it is a nonconforming sign on this property, that the property under question tonight, P U D, it would be off premise advertising for that property now.
Oh, right. I mean, that's not even up for grabs.
Yeah, it's no longer on that property and... But we felt that it would be a challenge.
Okay, good. Any other questions from you guys? Yeah, go ahead.
Of course, I do have another question. Under the general, general standards for P U D plan approval and mentions, the project should be substantially completed within the time period specified and is scheduled. A development submitted by the applicant, was there a schedule submitted?
There, there was not. Again, I think the applicant can speak to that. They are farther along in the design of the medical office than they were in the daycare. So, but I'll let the applicant speak to that.
I had a question, Paul. I just wanted to get a grip on what exactly we're approving tonight. Because, just for me, because I see a lot of detail on the medical office. And I see a pretty good site plan on the daycare. And I see a good drawing on the medical office. But the daycare seems like it's kind of uncertain right now. I mean, are we, are we approving, what are we approving tonight? Are we approving these uses?
No, that's a good question.
Or are we approving the site plan?
It's a good...
Cause I'm, I'm just really, when I saw another daycare going in there, I'm like, I don't know. It seems like an interesting placement.
Well, so the uses are permitted uses in the retail zoning district. So this is a retail zoning district. It's not an office zoning district. So those is retail zoning. So both uses are permitted use. They are proposing a land division, so, and it's hard to see on this, but there is a panhandle that would come back to this lot number two. So there are two lots. We felt that it was important to show the entire site, especially with all of the cross access ways. And there would be sharing of parking, but both drives go, oh, you know, completely over to the next shopping center and ultimately up to the Goddard School, the post office. Same way, they both go out to Beechmont Avenue. So we felt that it was very important that the, the development be shown. They're much farther along in the design of this than they were of the design of the daycare building. And I'll let the applicant speak to if contracts are in place or, you know, what's moving forward. We know that the development will have to stay in this building window in order to keep these cross access through. And I think there are existing easements that those have to stay in place. So what you are approving, but we didn't have a final rendering of this building or final building placement. So what you are approving tonight would be a P U D for the entire site, but most specifically phase one of that P U D, similar to what we've done.
Phase one.
Phase one.
Which is the medical office, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we'd be referring to.
Would phase two come back then?
Yes, phase two would be coming back to review. Yes, to see the building, yes. Although...
That helps me a lot.
Okay.
Any more questions for staff? The applicant like to come up? Mr. Merrill? Please give your name and address.
Yes.
Thank you.
Randy Merrill, McGill Smith Puntin, thirty seven hundred Part forty two Drive, Suite one ninety B, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two four one. So I'm, I'm, I'm the architect and I'm representing the landowner. And I do have, we tried to address some of your, try to make your comments. And I'd like to show you a revised plan that addresses some of the areas of your mind in this passage. So what, a couple of things. We are a little farther along on the medical building. The, the daycare has actually flipped the building. They are, you know, it, it's, it's not something we control. They're going to come back in at a second phase, but we wanted to show it to you because there's a couple of things that we've addressed. We've addressed the connectivity of the sidewalks. And we've addressed actually a little bit of parking. And we've also located where, where we think the appropriate sign will be. And on the other hand, we, we don't have any problem with the recommendations from staff. I'm gonna show what other questions you might have for us. The daycare property will come in when they get their stuff finalized. But this is pretty much what they've shown us they want to do now. And actually, it, it gains about four more parking spaces.
Okay, that sounds good. All right. Does anybody have a question from Mr. Merrill? He's the project architect.
Well, I, I did want to address your question about traffic.
Go right ahead, yeah.
Yeah, so the actual density is less, we have less parking spaces here than it was before. So we've not done an official traffic study at, at this point. But we felt that the density of both of these uses is a lot less than was there previously. So I don't think, how much time you go back in time, but you won't have an increased traffic for this particular use.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense. I guess, I think this is a separate question, but when was the, when were the prior buildings demolished?
Eighteen, two thousand eighteen?
Okay, so far there is.
Yeah, yeah. And I believe that was about fifty thousand square feet of space. Cause those are, those are, I think, two story buildings.
Two stories.
Are these standard or equip parking lot with apartment space widths with what the widths are on the daycare spaces?
The standard parking spaces are like...
Nine by nineteen.
Nine by nineteen, yeah.
And that's what these are?
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah.
Not seeing just a drop off and, you know, these are two aisles here. Back and in and out, in and out, somewhere maybe there's some situation. Whether it's parking poles or something else in that back lot. Is that a little bit better for people to drop off? You know, what I'm seeing here.
And I, I'll have to acquiesce to the, to the daycare. They know, it's their business. They know how to operate their business. So if they need, if there's a pull in, they, they have to pull in and get the kid off and there's enough spaces for them. And again, from a timing standpoint, when you think about how much parking the daycare needs when they need it, it's not the same time that the daycare needs, or the medical office uses their, their parking as well.
Their parking.
Yes, right, right. So in the mornings, medical office probably isn't even open, maybe, maybe not. And so we feel, they feel there's enough, is adequate parking for both facilities with this layout.
Right, yeah, and it's not planned, it's more like back to parking, back and in and out.
Right.
Any other questions? Go ahead. You guys then, okay.
So just a couple of things. The, I didn't see any topo or anything, so, and I, I know it's pretty flat.
So it's, it's not very flat. It's actually not. There's a ten foot rise from corner to corner. Believe it or not.
That's hard to believe.
So basically...
From the west to the east or from the...
It, it got high to the east, low to the west. It's very deceiving. I, I was shocked. But when we got the topography survey, it's like, wow.
Well, actually, that kind of makes sense because there's, there's the lower level of those original office buildings.
Yes, yeah. And I, I would like to address one more question regarding the sidewalks along the adjacent lot three building. The, you know, th- those were really, they're not compliant to the laws of work concerned because they're on our property. They're parking on our property. So, you know, in phase two, when the daycare develops their thing, they will have to address access out of the back of those buildings. So whether they keep it and then run it to the west to get to the public way. But they will no longer be able to park back there. So that's why we presented a little bit of landscaping to soften that, to allow us to get the grade to work out.
The only concern, why I was asking about the grade was in terms of screening the headlights and so forth. From, you know, some, there's still some residential that are on Nagel. And I know you had some problems with things like that.
We, we have not thought about that. There's some landscaping that'll probably, probably grow there. But, and that's the lowest part of the, part of the ground.
Well, I'm talking about on Nagel. We submitted a landscape plan.
We did. No, we have not screened that, no.
Oh, okay. I guess I would probably want to see some additional care taken to that, just to make sure. And then, so I guess predominantly, then we're still talking about the medical office building. The, all of the HVAC equipment with the roof mounted are on the ground, we can screen.
I'm not sure how much mechanical there is. It's probably going to be in, cause there's a pitched roof. So there might be some condensing units out back.
And that's what we screened, that's the difference on that. So the building materials themselves, I mean, we got this, but it kind of, actually, it looked to me like almost you're putting shingles on the side of the building.
No, that's brick. It's brick and stone. It, this is commensurate with a, like a, a, a lucky building. You know what I mean? That's what this is modeled from.
And the shingles, would those be architectural?
Yes.
Do we get cut sheets for the, for the lights?
We...
I mean, it'd be LEDs?
I believe we did.
Yes, sure. And again, in terms of adjusting the photometrics and getting those cutoffs right, that, that's an easy thing for us to do. So when we get to the next level, we, we will make sure that all gets accomplished.
And then I just want to echo my fellow commissioners' thoughts, although he has children and I have cats. In terms of the drop off for the, for the daycare, I mean, there isn't a drop off. Everybody's got to pull into parking spaces and stuff. And as you said, they do know their business certainly. But, you know, it just seems like, you know, it would be more advantageous for them to have some kind of a covered area that you could drop the kids off.
Again, I, that's, that's something that in phase two, they're gonna have to show you what they want to do. That's not what we're, I mean, we, we've dropped this in like they've showed us they want it.
No, you might just share those.
Yes, yes. And, and I appreciate that.
I think that's all that I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And my question was, just to kind of follow what I was asking Paul on. It seems like the, we're, we're well along the way as far as this medical office and medical office user are. And are we not, who is it?
We are not allowed to disclose.
You can't disclose? We just did one and we knew it was like Mercy or something like that, somewhere where I work. So I didn't, but if it's a secret, we'll...
It's, yeah, it's...
Okay. The, and I know you're not the daycare person, you're just helping with the design. But is this daycare for sure a deal? Because again, I'm scratching my head of why are... You know, I know the free market determines where these things go, but I'm just scratching my head of, I mean, there's...
Well, I, I, all I can say is apparently they, they feel this is a good area. They're advancing their, their plans accordingly. That's all I can really say. So they, they should be, you know, submitting probably in the next few cycles to get their stuff in line as well.
I'm sorry, I was going to, so we're worried about the medical office tonight, correct? All right.
Again, we felt that it was important to show how the parking interplays with each other because they are really dependent upon each, the shared parking. They were just shy, but now they're actually... They were just shy, but now they've actually added more.
Yeah, that's what Mr. Merrill said.
They have, they have enough.
They have enough for both properties to share, that's why we're recommending a condition of shared parking.
But, but the variance we are being asked to approve is for the daycare center.
It is, so you can defer that, I guess, especially because the plan we initially got in, the building now has been flip-flopped, so we don't know.
Yeah, I would.
And the position of the building, again, it's east-west, it hasn't really changed, it's just how the orientation of the building is.
It's fluid with the daycare. Okay, thank you very much, we really appreciate it. Oh, yes, sir, go ahead.
One more question, so the differentiation between Phase one and Phase two, is that, like, what's going to be done in Phase one? Is that this line, vertical line I'm seeing on the page?
That's a property line, so there's gonna need to be some grading work done overall to make the next piece kind of pad ready. Because we can't just shove dirt around and have a hole, we gotta make sure that it's balanced out. So, yeah, so from, you know, there'll probably be a wall to bring up the pad for the daycare area and take ours down. So, there's, again, there's a ten-foot fall across this site, so we've got to figure out how to balance that out. So, that wall which you see there, which is really in Phase two, has to be built so we can put our stuff in. And again, all the storm will be put in, so Phase two can just tie into it.
Okay, so then, Phase one looks like it's a box within.
Yes, pretty much a box, right.
So, is Phase two that included that little panhandle that?
Well, the panhandle is just property, so we're going to develop the parking and the dumpster up in the northern portion of that. So, basically, the connection to, I guess, that's the credit union. That's gonna be part of it, the connections through the other pieces will be part of that, and the storm will be part of it. And we'll bring the utilities to the point where the daycare can connect to it. So, we'll make the next phase a little bit easier, because we will be ahead of them.
Sounds good. Is there anybody else from your team that wants to present?
I don't know if there's anything else you need from us.
Mr. Royce may have something to say. Please give us your name and address.
Sure, my name is Jerry Royce, thirty-nine fifty-one Hammersmith Lane, I'm with T Three Development. And my involvement is, I'm partnering with the owners for the medical office building as the developer and owner of it, co-owner with it. And you asked the question, Michael, about the timing. We would like to break ground and start in May, and we'd like to have it finished for occupancy in the first quarter of next year. So, I hope that helps as far as timing. As Randy said, we're in agreement with staff's comments, we're excited about this. We have a client who's excited about it, and at the proper time, when we can, we'd be happy to share that with you, as far as who it is. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Any questions for Mr. Royce? Thank you. Okay, is there any proponents who want to speak in favor of the project? Any proponents? I don't see any, are there any, so we'll do it like the last, last time, opponents and then people who just have a comment or any opponents? Anybody who wants to speak? Yes, sir, please come give us your name and address.
My name is Nick Zuccarelli, I'm an attorney for the ground leaseholders at eighty-sixty and eighty-eighty Beauchamp Avenue, their proprietor Rick Baer. So, the first sort of objection that we have to this proposed plan is that the ground lessees, who will be the, effectively the owners of the property, they're in control of it until twenty-one fourteen.
Can I interrupt just a quick second? Is there something we can show up there so I can see who his client's property is?
Yeah, the overhead view is perfect here.
Okay.
So, the bottom, that would be the southwest corner, to the southwest of, that's the intersection of Nagel and Beauchamp there.
Yeah.
The southwest corner there is the Anderson Pub and Grill, that's one of my client's properties.
That's your client, okay.
And then, as well as the Strip Plaza next to it.
That's your client also.
That's my client as well, actually, in fact, as well as the Anderson Plaza to the east of the subject property here. So, they own, they're the ground lease tenants on all of those properties until twenty-one fourteen, so for the next ninety-four years.
Thank you.
And they're, weren't noticed with this hearing, which is part of, part of why I'm here today. I am not sure, the fee owners may have been noticed, that being the Camboni missionaries that were referenced earlier. But the ground lease tenants weren't noticed with this hearing, weren't, haven't had an opportunity to run title exams and do a deep dive on this plan and make sure that their rights aren't being adversely affected in any way. So, more importantly though, more specifically to the plan itself, from the cursory review, my understanding is the ground lease tenants became aware of this Friday afternoon or so. I became aware of it Friday evening and began looking into it. There are certain effects on those ground lease tenants from this plan. Mr. Gibbs mentioned earlier, one of the primary concerns is the parking situation, that on the northern border of my client's properties and the southern border of the PUD property, there is currently tenants on, you know, the ground leases sub-tenants are using that area for parking and have been doing so for decades. And the proposed plan doesn't account for that at all, doesn't reflect the current parking arrangement. So, before the plan goes forward, we need to have a discussion between the ground lease, the ground lessees and the property owners as to whether this is going to be dealt by an easement, a private easement, or how we're going to deal with that. As it sits right now, it's fertile ground for disputes with those tenants that are, you know, the sub-tenants of the ground lessees. In addition, along the same lines that Anderson Pub and Grill property, northeast corner of the structure on that building, there is dumpster enclosure. And the pickup comes off Nagel down that southernmost drive on the PUD property to access the dumpster. And again, currently, right now, it's not reflected in the plan in any way. And this could cause issues down the line if we go forward with the plan before addressing that. The tenants, I believe there was a photo up there, I have some exhibits prepared, but I think everything I really wanted to see was already in the presentation. There was a photo of the back of that Strip Plaza building at eighty-eighty Beauchamp, I'm not sure if we can pull that up here anywhere. That's it right there. So, in addition, you'll see some of the parking that we were just talking about, and this is in use by that Strip Plaza. And then, there's those rear doorways as well and entrance ways. Our understanding of it is that the property line effectively runs immediately along the rear of this building. So, the employees are using this, you know, for business operations and for simple access to the property. And again, right now, we just haven't addressed that in any way, so the plan's a little bit premature. I have been told I haven't had a chance to go out and do an inspection on the property yet, but there is also a retaining wall in use that serves the eighty-eighty Strip Plaza property. We don't have any plans in place for maintenance of that. Still, you know, the plan kind of hasn't addressed it yet. And lastly, if we can go back to another, I think the survey plat was up there. That would be a good one there. There's three access ways to the subject property coming off Beauchamp. I could, I have an exhibit that circled them, but I'll see if I can just describe them to you. Sort of on the south end of this diagram, square in the middle, that is an access way that runs through the, my client's properties up to the PUD property. We haven't dealt with that at all yet either, there's no, been no communications, because the ground lessees are just now finding out about the whole plan that, as to how that's going to be dealt with. An easement may be necessary to serve the PUD property here. And in addition, you can see on this, this particular diagram, on the eastern end, there's another access way off Beauchamp that runs diagonally towards the PUD property. And there's two, there's one on the southern end and one on the southeast corner and one on the northeast corner that serves that property as well. We would need to figure out easements serving the PUD property for that purpose as well. So, in effect, we've got, you know, ground lessees who weren't noticed about the hearing and have done a review and found out that they've got rights that are going to be adversely affected in this. Easements need to go both ways between the property owner here and my clients. And as it stands right now, we just don't have those in place. So, I would recommend that this at least be tabled until those discussions can be had between my clients and the property owner. And get those issues worked out so that it doesn't result in, you know, a result that nobody wants, litigation from the sub-tenants, anything like that.
Great. Who has questions for Mr. Zuccarelli? Besides me?
You know, this, this is not necessarily a zoning map here, but, so, but just let me ask you this question. If they have easements in place today, cross-access easements, then how would this be impactful to your clients?
Well, that's, part of it is, is we don't know that there are easements there. We haven't had time to do the title exam.
If there aren't easements there, then.
Right, well.
There are no entitlements to your client to utilize their property, correct?
I would not necessarily concede that point, in that this has been used as such for dozens of years and there's a strong inclination that there could be a prescriptive easement argument made for that parking.
Well, Mr. Ellis, you're the.
Yeah, I understand what he's saying.
Yeah, I understand too.
Okay, well, is there any other questions down there? Okay, you guys, all right. What's your basis for saying that there had to be notice to lessees?
The lessees, because they are on these ninety-nine-year leases and, you know, are kind of being blindsided by this plan, have rights that are adversely affected. And while I understand their tenants are not the fee owners of the property, it doesn't really matter if the Camboni missionaries were served. The people who are going to be in de facto control of the property for the next ninety-four years are just finding out about this and.
Right, but you're not saying notice was defective, you're just saying they should have, it'd been nice if they knew about, because they have important interests.
Yeah, more than nice to know about it, I would say it was necessary for them to protect their legal interests.
But there's no legal basis to notice lessees, right?
I'm not sure.
You need to research that.
I absolutely will when I've got some, you know, more than a weekend to educate myself on the case, that's.
Yeah, that happens.
Takes us back to the problem.
And, so, help us understand a little bit, when you say the ground tenants, I think I hear what you're saying is Camboni owns all this and they've given long-term leases to your clients. So, we're familiar with the Anderson Township Pub. Folks own that. Is there another entity that owns the Strip Center that's your client? Or are you saying the individual retailers in the Strip Center are your client?
No, no, so Camboni missionaries owns, is the fee owner.
Yeah.
Of all of these properties.
Yep.
And then, my client, Rick Baer, in various LLCs that he's the proprietor of, I believe they are owned in different LLCs, but it comes back to the same members.
Oh, I see, so there's one person who owns an LLC who basically has lease rights to that and they sublease it?
It's my understanding is they have the ground lease, meaning, you know, so Camboni missionaries has leased them the land for the next ninety-nine years. And then, they sublease to all the tenants who actually occupy the spaces.
So, you have one client who kind of is, has the lease rights to all that?
Right, right.
Okay, I understand. And I think we touched on, you don't know if you have easements, you may have a claim of prescriptive easements, you're saying. You need to look into that.
Yeah. On both counts, I agree, yes.
I understand. I don't have any more questions. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional opponents? Is there anybody who would just like to give some information? Who's been sworn in already? Okay, all right. Well, yes. So, Mr. Merrill, would you like to say anything else based on what you've heard? You don't have to, only if you.
We're happy to, so if you go back to the plan? Good, okay, right there. So, what he's talking about on the pub, they have parking that comes off the drive, they've got a dumpster that comes off the drive that we're preparing. There's no change in that use. On the other side, there's parking that, as far as I'm concerned, it's my client's property. We're not showing that the daycare will stop the clients from using the back doors, they're gonna try to address that. The parking issues, I'm not sure how to resolve that, that's not theirs to park on, it's not their property. I don't understand what the issue is. We've maintained all the access points we've, we've been maintaining throughout the life of this property, so we're not cutting off circulation to anybody. So, I'm really not, I'm confused why there's an issue other than they want to take our property for parking.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a question? Okay. Mr. Royce is.
If some of you know me as a developer, certainly try to get input from the municipalities that we build in and also the neighbors. So, happy to have a discussion. Now, I'm not the owner, my partner is. And I've talked to them, they're, they're more than reasonable and they're happy to have discussions with our neighbors to try to come up with a solution, figure something out. But I don't think it makes sense to table this at this time for that, if in fact, there's not rights to it. But, that's just my input. Again, we're open to discussions to, for everyone here, but, you know, we'd like to move forward with this.
Mr. Royce, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You, you probably did an ALTA survey on this before you all purchased it. Were there any easements in you much, you know, at the top of your head?
I'm not the owner, so I wasn't involved initially, but Randy, do you know if?
Do you have the survey that we did?
I'm, I don't know.
As far as I know, there was access easements, cross-up on the location doesn't mean anything.
Going east-west, the two east-west and the north-south.
And there's also an access easement to be, to be maintained, everyone of those access points, we have not changed any of the.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. So, that was a, their opportunity to save, save something. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Mr. Reinhardt would, please come forward. Were you sworn in before?
Something years ago, I was up here.
I could swear in now.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Please give your name and address.
Mark Reinhardt, twelve eighty Nagel, so I'm the owner of the Goddard School, just north of this. You know, I'm not in favor of the project, I'm not necessarily against it either, it looks like it's a, it's a, it's a pretty interesting use of the space there. I guess my only comment was, you know, and I, we have no legal basis for this, but we, the school does have a maintenance gate on the rear end of their property that, that just accesses out onto that east-west easement, the drive lane, it's basically for our grass cutters and stuff to access to. It was just a consideration if there's any way to still have that gate available to us to just somehow get out onto that access road. But if not, I completely get it. And it doesn't, it's nothing like paved or a street, we just roll over curbs or whatever, but just an opportunity to get to it.
Mr. Royce said just a second ago, he's willing to work with his neighbors, so I'd suggest perhaps touching base with him if you wish after the meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, do you see the word development plan at the very top? Well, do you see the word development plan at the very top? That second E, if you just come straight down, it looks like you, there's like a little cutout for a landscape? Yeah. I think the gate's somewhere right through there. It's just a double gate, probably six feet wide.
Where can you use the gate?
Just lawn, equipment in, back and forth to cut the...
So I have to round you guys back in a little bit, because we're trying to get all this on the record. So if you could just put your comments on the, it's okay.
Thank you.
But if you, do you have anything else to say? Didn't mean to interrupt you.
No.
Okay, did anybody have any questions for Mr. Reinhardt?
Were you given notice or any prior discussions with the developers?
Yeah, I saw the sign and then I got something in the mail. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this? Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for all the comments and presentations. So I got the, well, I'll turn it over to the board before I give my opinion, but go ahead and, let's go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll have some discussion on this very interesting project. Mr., I'll start in the middle. Mr. Hinson, what's your thoughts on this?
You know, I think I'm generally in favor of the plan as it's presented. You know, I'd like to see the daycare come through, see the... Some of these cross-access agreements or easements are fairly typical in Anderson along Beauchamp. I think we've got enough experience in the room to approach through figuring that out. But otherwise, I feel pretty confident.
Thank you. Mr. Durgis, what's your comments at this time?
I think in general, I'm in favor of it as well. I guess with the, some of the points brought up through the public comments, I guess I just have some uncertainty on knowing whether proper notification was given. And my other question or concern is if we were to approve this and there were some legal constraints that were considered, what the ramifications of that would be?
I can speak on the notification. So the township notifies property owners within 200 feet, and that's dictated by the Hamilton County Auditor's website. We have no information about lessees and sub-leases and sub-leases or sub-leases. So we notify the property owners. We have a list in our file, the property owners that were notified, and be happy to share that with you. So Camboni was on that list of notification multiple times, because they own so many properties within that area.
Interesting. Thank you, Paul. Is there any other questions?
No, I mean, I think that if it comes to fruition that there are easements or whatever, whether they're parking easements or access easements, and they cause modifications to this plan, significant modifications which staff doesn't feel comfortable approving as minor changes, then obviously we would have to come back to this commission for a blessing on those changes. That's my understanding of the process, so. No, I'm in, I'm in favor, I'm tired of looking at the parking lot with the cars in it, so...
We didn't ask for supervision.
Yeah. Well, great, those are good, great comments. I am a little worried about the possible conflict between the land use owners, but I do agree with the comment Mr. Royce made that he's under, this is this medical office, he's ready to go on this. And that would be, the zoning technical requirements aside, that would be a tremendous use there. The preliminary drawings we've seen there are right in line with something that would fit there. I'm still a little sketchy on the daycare. I appreciate what that potential investment would be, but I'm not, we don't have detail on that. And so from what I understand, we'd be taking a vote to recommend approval of this medical office building in Phase One. Phase One.
The PUD would be for the entire property, though. This would be handled very similar to the First Finan-, or former First Financial, Buffalo Wild Wings, and the retail center with Tri-Health in the back. The PUD was for the entire site because they were sharing parking and it was, the development was integral with each other, but each phase came back to you with the different rendering to the different buildings.
So you would be looking to us for a motion to basically approve this PUD site plan?
Yes, and I think you could clarify as a condition that Phase Two, which include the daycare, you know, be brought back to the zoning commission for review.
Okay. Thank you.
And you can defer the variance at that point in time as well.
Yeah. Somebody like to try and make a motion? Yes, would you like to? Thank you.
I would try to do that. So relative to Case Anderson 1-2020 PUD for 1240 and 1246 Nagel Road, I would make a motion that we approve the PUD plan, most specifically with the specific development plan for Phase One, which would include the 10,000 square foot medical office building as it's been represented by both the architect and the representative of the property owner here this evening, and that the Phase Two of the development and any variances that might be needed with that would come back to this commission. That's based on the general standards for PUD approval as quoted in our staff report. And I believe that's all I thought.
There were some additional conditions that were suggested.
Yeah, hold on a second. With the, yeah, I'm sorry. Also included in the motion would be the additional conditions that are stated that the freestanding sign on Nagel Road be limited to a monument-style sign that would be consistent with the building materials used on the medical office building. And it would be limited to a maximum of 10 feet in height, that a shared offer, or I'm sorry, a shared parking agreement between lots one and two would be submitted to township's staff and reported prior to the final occupancy of any building on the site, and that pedestrian plan would be resubmitted identifying sidewalk connections internally into surrounding property, and it's for staff review and approval.
The other two items were bike rack and lighting plan, but that would just need to meet minimum zoning requirements since a variance was in issue.
Right. No variances with this.
Okay, very good. So we have a very good motion on that. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Roll call. When you're ready.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Mr. Hinson?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much.
So we will have a meeting next month. We will need one alternate if you're available.
Do we want, oh, we took out the election of the officers, right?
Yeah, so we will need to do that next month as well. And the meeting would be on March the 23rd.
Right.
Okay, thank you. We still need to...